Good evening. The time is 6:30, and I would like to call this special session of Charten City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley?
Here.
Mrs. Tuhah?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Laoko?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Means?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an IT services agreement with IS Squared Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second at discussion?
All the questions.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuhah?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Laoko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes. Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Ordinance Number 3257. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an IT services agreement with IS Squared Incorporated and declaring an emergency. Ordinance Number 3257. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an IT services agreement with IS Squared Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of Ordinance Number 3257?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second at discussion? Good evening, Randy.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you?
Oh, perfect.
Good. First, I wanted to start by thanking everybody for coming in to this special session tonight. Appreciate it greatly, and we have a few things on the agenda. As we're getting towards the holidays, we need to try to get these things done for our partnership. Additionally, the law director could not be here in person, but he is available by phone if we need him for anything at all this evening. Just to back up a little bit and give you a little more history on where, how we got to where we are today.
Randy, can you unmute?
Your microphone's unread. There you go. Okay.
But is that recorded, so?
We're recording.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I thought that was just GTVs. Sorry.
Thank you.
So anyway, before I jump into that, let me just tell you that it was pointed out to me by Dave that my memo is incorrect. On the third line where it says December 19, 2023, December 18, 2026, it should be 2026, not 2025. And that's a fluctuating date. It could be January. It'll be as soon as we can get it harmonized. So it is a three-year agreement. So to back up and say, okay, where did we start? Once we realized we had to get the ball rolling, there were three companies that we looked closely at. And when I say "we," it was mostly the chief and I, talking to these different companies. IS Squared, obviously, was one. All Covered, our current provider, is another one, and then a company called VC3. VC3 was very attractive in that they're large, and they also handle around 1,100 municipalities. So they understand our world and have a really deep field of people as well and understanding what we need. So we spent a lot of time with all those different providers, lots of meetings, lots of Zooming, lots of, you know, asking questions. I'm asking us questions, trying to understand our environment. What do we have? What's, what needs to be fixed? How do we go forward? Where do we want to go? What are some of our plans? I mean, we have lots of projects, some even this year that we didn't execute, that we're looking at doing next year. So we spent a lot of time with them so that they could give us numbers and try to compare as closely as we could apples to apples for the different providers. That said, we're looking for council to award it, allow me to enter into the contract under the manager's ability to award a contract under professional services. So it's not like out to bid. We didn't have to go through that process. It's through the powers that I have as in the charter. So money-wise, all three are pretty much the same. When I put all those numbers together and the different services they provide, trying to compare apples to apples, they're not far off from one another at the end of the day. But that really wasn't my overriding impetus, wasn't trying to get the least expensive. That's not what I felt was the best for the community. That said, our current provider, as it's evolved, the chief was just saying about they're, they're trying to do a scope for a little thing that's going on right, not a little, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to downgrade your leads audit, for a leads audit that's happening right now. So they've changed kind of their format, and we're spending more and more and more with them. So in reality, I believe they would be the most expensive of the three that we were looking at. So jumping into my memo, gave you the memo dated November 17th. Give you background on IS Squared if you weren't familiar with them. I know some of you are very familiar. Some went to the open house that they had, and no, no of them, everyone knows of the company. But for me, I was very happy to find out that they actually provide these kinds of services and wanted to be involved with the community from their end. The monthly fees, approximately $12,000 a month, and that does include 40 hours of labor per project up to, and they've offered to shadow our current provider without charge to the city while they try to get a better understanding of what we do have. Bala offered to us the opportunity to bring staff members into his office and kind of give an overall, like, IT 101 for a bunch of our members. And that was just saying, this is a good thing for you guys to understand. Above and beyond, just not, not, not trying to get our business, just trying to be a good neighbor and be a part of our community. And I know that chief has multiple times said how much he enjoyed that. I was not there. I was incapacitated at the time, so couldn't attend. But others did as well, down to like Frank and Leroy, trying to get everybody to understand that the IT system truly is a complex and very deep environment that we have here in our community now, much more so than it ever, ever has been, and, and all the different problems and issues that can arise if we don't do it correctly. So, let's see. Both VC3 and IS Squared put a device on our system, and they could look at everything that we have, go through and see what kind of equipment we have, how many mailboxes we have, the different servers, the switches, things like that. And that's probably about as technical as I can get with it, but to understand where we are so that they can see. And I never was, communicated back to me that anybody saw any of that happening on the other, other side, so. Like I said before, their approach is they've become a strategic partner with the city. They have resources throughout the country and actually globally. It's a global company. I skipped over, there's 300 employees and I think 28 municipalities that they deal with now, that was called out in the memo. The references that I was able to talk to were all very, very flattering with their comments about IS Squared and their tenacity, I'll say is a word, to get the job done, to do the job correctly, to help them out. One of the things that I think really differentiated them from others is the fact that they're, they want to understand what we have and treat us like a partner, not treat us like a client, in that almost as if our money is their money. Case in point, we have the computers, they're like five, six, five, six years old. And the other companies are saying, yes, the end of life, throw them away, replace them all. Bala had us go in, look at some things, and he's like, your computers look fine. You really don't need to throw them all away just because they're X amount of days old. You can keep them. And, and if you need one, actually, we could just run up to Costco, buy one, and bring it back and plug it in, instead of having to buy all new now. And I think it's a little bit different of an outlook than why doesn't the city buy the newest, shiniest devices, newest, shiniest, biggest, most expensive things so that on their end, everything can run smoother. It'll run, it would obviously run smoother for us, too, but we might be spending, you know, one and a half, two times what we necessary to spend. For a big, big company that's saying, just try to do this so we get all the tickets down, so we're not calling constantly and things like that. I feel like I'm rambling now. One of the things that fluctuated in the costs is the exchange, the Microsoft 365 migration that we need to do for our email. Depends on the subscriptions that we get. So there's G3s and G1s, which are for government accounts, and depends on how secure you need those, want those. So that will vary once we finally dial that down and say, okay, instead of being $2,200 a month, it'll be $1,600 a month. But that's, that's a variable cost that, that will change, and that should probably bring, bring down IS Squared's quote thing. So at this point, I think I'll turn it back to council, see if they have any questions for me, and then we can ask Paul and Bala to weigh in as well.
Go ahead, Dave. You start.
Well, as everyone in this group knows, I'm very knowledgeable about this. To be honest with you, I don't have a clue. So I defer to those who've looked into this. I think I'm showing my age.
Well, for those of us that have, have toured their facility, and I did do that. Impressive is the perfect word, and the support staff, it's incredible. And to have you here and potentially our partner in this regard is, is really outstanding. So we're pleased. But I do have a few questions for, on the transition from one group to another, I'm sure you've gone through that. What are some of the highs and lows, and what can we expect on that?
Most of the transitions initially, I'm being honest here, like, no transition that I have been, been on your side or on my side as a vendor or as a, as a provider who was actually doing, has gone perfect in any of the transition, no matter what the size of the transition is. I'm being honest here. There are always skeletons that are hidden in the closet that you will actually not know till the time, the day of, the things happen. There'll be devices, there'll be websites, there'll be accounts that nobody knows, and you will only try, you will figure that out on the day when that particular device or that website or something goes down. And then that basically creates the issues, and you have to deal with the issue, and you figure it out. So that will happen no matter what you do, how much ever you are prepared. So generally, what we do is we try to minimize that by coming in physically, auditing, looking at everything that's there, talking to the vendor. That's why we want to do a shadow on the reverse shadow. So we want the vendor to be available for 15 days while we are doing the work, and they're just basically looking on our shoulders and making sure that, hey, if we have to ask them, they can ask them. We do go through our checklist based on the history that we have gone through. So we will knock out, ask many of those things. The second important thing that, and this I'm talking about from what doesn't go right, right? So the change, whenever there is a change to the, to the provider, there's a honeymoon period of like 60 days or so, where everybody is happy that, hey, we got a new provider, things are going to be great, right? And, and the expectations are high. And there's always that, this got missed, and this, these are no different than anybody else, right? So there is going to be few people who would feel that, so we changed so lot, right? What's, what is it that we are getting extra? So that expectation is going to happen. So you are going to fall from the tree, and you just want to make sure that you land on your feet, not on your head. That's our responsibility to make sure that we are, we are providing you that service. So there is going to be that moment, one or two, where there is, that's going to happen. So I think the important aspect to manage that is we are here in your face, and you can actually see us, hold us, and make sure that we basically deliver, right? And, and us being just right across the road makes it much easier. You can just basically call us, and we'll be here in 10 minutes. So it's, it's an advantage that we actually have. We are trying to grow. We want to understand how the community works here, so we want to be part of this. So it's, for us, it's a lot more pressure because we don't want to fail. We want your, you to give us the, that reference call, like what we were able to give with the cities that we have been in. We have had a pretty good track record. We try to go by the quality, and most of the times, you, at least from my side and my team, you will hear the truth. Whether it is bad or it is good, we are going to give it to you without any color. And if we feel that you shouldn't be spending money on something, we're not going to make you spend the money on that thing, even though it might be profitable for us. Case in point, I don't want you guys to buy $100,000 worth of desktops because you're running Windows 10, Windows 11 is no different, it's going to run for another two years. Why replace it? Replace it as a cycle. Does it put a little bit more stress on our teams? Absolutely. But we are there to do that, right? So why should the city, and you are better off spending that money on something else. So that's the way we look at things. In the long run, we believe that once you build that trust and we have the trust, it's just basically much more easier to do the business. There's always give and take. We will make mistakes. We will come clean that we have made a mistake, and we will improve. Similarly, there will be times when we will come and say, hey, this is, we are bleeding money here, we, we will probably have to create a project. And we, we will be, that's the way we work with all our, all our clients. That, there's always a give and take. So that's our philosophy. That's the way we have been doing business for the good 14 years now, and we have grown from 1 to 300. Hopefully, we'll grow bigger. So that, that's the way we, we do business.
With Mike Butt being gradually more in the IT side, is he interacting with ISS, and will he be part of that transition? How does that work?
Mike was at the training, right?
Yes, he was.
And he'll be, when we do projects, he'll be the one to take them around, show them things, and help them. Yep.
I had a few more questions on your, on the, on the information that you provided us. I'm sure some of these answers are rather quick, but on the incident severity priority definitions, you have classified a P1, single user, user issues will not be classified as a P1. So I sort of get that, but let's say it's Randy's system, his computer is gone, and I know that, would that be a single user? Or are you talking about the client is a single user?
So anything that is going to affect the business or the ability to do the work for the people, that's a P1, right? Generally, we put that thing in because a lot of times, someone's mouse is not working, and they start screaming, right? Literally, we have, we have had these things. And they will open it as a P1, and they say, I need the mouse now. It's, it's, honestly speaking, it's common sense. If chief is going to call and say, hey, my cameras are not working, and it's just the chief, one camera is not working, but it's on the main intersection, that's a P1. We are going to dispatch, right? So it's, it's common sense. We don't want people to start abusing the system. So that's why we, we put these classifications. But we do have certain things internally that we class as VIP users. When the VIP user calls, that means that is something serious, and we are ready to pick up the call 24 by 7 on those incidents.
On your, our global managed cybersecurity services and solution, you have a reference to a tabletop exercise. Is that something that we participate in?
Yes.
On an annual basis?
Yes.
Or how does that work?
Yes. So basically, what happens is a tabletop exercise is generally done, then we go over your risks. So you have to actually be on the table to be able to do it. So what's your risk? How are you going to mitigate? We run through certain scenarios. If this happens, then what, right? And it could also include to a point where you might say, hey, if this happens, do you actually have coverage with insurance? Do you actually have a lawyer to basically protect you? There might be certain state laws, federal laws that basically kick in. So we go through all those things. So we generally do this with the clients at least once a year, so that they know where they actually stand. And we will actually do some live exercises. We will probably pick one or two people, and they will not know that it's an exercise, but we will go through the process of basically getting into their system by calling, by sending them texts, messages, emails, social, through social media. We try to break into them, and we'll show you that, hey, we, we've reached through all these parameters, and these are the things that we have to actually, actually fix. We have gone to the point where we actually have asked people to drop USB sticks on the parking lots, and people have picked them, and then add to the machine, and we got them.
So you're describing, we've had some of that in the past. I remember we discussed that, but that's on an individual basis, and that's you doing something, you're off-site doing that, breaking in, or, you know. Well, I'm, when I say one of your tabletop, I'm thinking you get a group in the room, and you start to assess something, and then, in our experience, it doesn't really happen, but all the steps to improve it or correct it are discussed and improved internally.
That would happen in our SOC. So we would actually, that's why I said there's a group of people from our side and your side who is going to participate. This would all lead to that. So we would have done all these things. We would already have the data, and then we will know your policies, procedures. Tabletop exercises are a lot more comprehensive, sit-down type of a thing rather than just basically, I just gave you examples of what are all the things that leads to that. So we have a SOC, that's where you're actually going to be doing it, and that's run by the CISO, CISO and his team. I don't get involved in that one, so he's the one who runs it.
Chris, as they're local, the tabletop could be quite interesting. So if there's like a USB in your driveway, no, don't.
Not, not necessarily.
They're literally right here. They could do like almost anything, like more than normal. So don't be plugging that in.
Before I go on, I didn't introduce you guys properly. So I apologize. Bala Ramaya, is that close enough?
Yep.
And Paul Gordon. Paul, I don't remember what your title is.
A sales executive.
Go ahead. Paul, been instrumental in helping us get through all this as well.
And what does Bala do?
Bala's the man.
I'll get under the desk and fix the cables if that is required, so.
So, Chris, I think the stuff you're referring to, the phishing exercises they've done?
Yes, that's.
That sounds like what you're talking about's a lot more thorough and not just a...
No, it's not just the phishing. So, so that's one part of the cybersecurity, training, phishing exercises. Those are constant through the year. Tabletop exercises is comprehensive in the sense like we do more documented approach of what you have and what you don't have, and go through scenarios.
Understanding insurance coverage.
It's included part of it.
We have lawyers that can even handle that. Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah.
Randy, I was going to ask you a question. So if we look at the pain points that we've had to date, we've had two different, we've had three, three providers, let's call it two more in the recent years, providers. What are the pain points that we've had? Do you feel adequately covered based on what we're approaching? And where did, I thought the last time we went through this, we seemed relatively satisfied with what, but I know it's ever evolving, too, as far as the offering. I mean, I know that we have tons of video now that we have to store, like, our needs are ever evolving as well, right? So can you just kind of give us a synopsis?
Yeah, I would, I would say so, Dan. In the contract, we have language that they will be, come on site when we need people on site, where in the other contract, it was really totally dependent on when the company wanted to decide that they needed to be on site.
Gotcha.
And they decided they didn't. It was like, if they, if they could, they would have been 100% remote. And the engineer that was coming, Laoko left, and then nobody was replaced.
We lost all that.
And then the current one is learning our system, but it's still not a good relationship. And I think with IS Squared engineers, we'll be able to better, create a better rapport and have them here more often as needed. Again, it's not, nothing we're going to abuse, but just something to touch base, come in, see what's going on, to get that service. And then the up to 40 hours of labor per project, rather than having to stop, put the world on hold until they figure out, okay, well, I need to scope this out. And then there was always more people involved. So there's like the person who's now going to be leading it, which was somebody we had never met before. Now, this is the person who's going to organize it, and she's, she or he's going to be responsible to oversee it. And then they're calling all these meetings with all these people, and all these people are getting paid, obviously, somehow, in the scope.
Right.
And it just, it just got unwieldy.
Gotcha.
So I think this will be more simplified, and easier to operate, yeah. Did you want to add anything to that, Chief?
No, I think you, you pretty much, yeah. So, you know, I think to, to even further address your question, is that I think this last provider that we had through the COVID period, their business model changed. And they weren't very community of, of how they were going to do that. But we lost that middle engineer position in the region, not just, not just for us, but across the Cleveland network or Cleveland, Cleveland area, all the customers that they serviced, they, they wiped those engineers out. So then, everything went remote for a long period of time, probably 18 months. They finally, in January, were able to reassign an engineer who then was responsible for the entire region, including us, but it took on a lot of extra work, which is they had multiple engineers. So we've played catch-up throughout the course of the year. And that engineer that they currently have assigned to us still hasn't caught up to what we have going on here. So it's, it's been a lot. And I think that it's not just reflective on our current provider, even the one before that, the, the environment's changed for them, too. These engineers are jumping from, from organization to organization. And at least in our conversations with Bala, it sounds like he retains his, his engineers. It sounds like they have a pretty good track record keeping their people. And the thing I think that was most attractive to me about them is they are here, and they got to get back and forth to work and drive through time. But in, they have, in all seriousness, they've demonstrated that they, you know, they've been in our, in our facility, looked at what we have here several times. It, to get, that's without being compensated for that, that's just to, you know, to see how we're structured. Because that's the fun thing, one of the things that's been most frustrating is that from the current providers, that they asked us to take on a lot more of the responsibility of our own system, but they weren't able to help us to understand what we even had here. So I learned more from Bala in that sit-down session. He, he spent almost an entire afternoon with, with a number of us, just going through what are the, what each of the systems do. Everything from the PC that sits on your desk, to how it integrates with the network, to the Wi-Fi, to the cloud storage, and explained how all those things work. That would have been helpful, you know, eight years ago when we first got in the, but, you know, kudos to he and his staff. And I hope that that, that type of relationship continues.
And what, what we will do is we will not assign you one engineer. What we will actually do is multiple engineers. The reason is that one engineer, and the person leaves, then you lose the history, right? When you have multiple people assigned, one person is sick, one person is on vacation, one person is somewhere else, you basically get the continuity with multiple people, so we can rotate. So I'll actually, not just the team here, we will also have people, like I flew in Steve from Arizona, so that he can, so what we also want to do is, if something happens here locally, we are able to still support you from the outside. Geographically, we want to have the dispersity of doing it. I'll give you an example. We have a pretty big customer in Guam, and a typhoon hit. I was actually there, and I got out on the last flight off the island. Typhoon hit, there was no power, and the local people, their homes were, were underwater. They couldn't help. We actually had 40 people from different parts of the country helping Guam. So we want to make sure that the knowledge is not just local, it's actually spread, so that in the event something physically, there's a snowstorm, and people are not able to come in, we still be able to support you from, from multiple people. So that's generally the way we go about doing things.
Okay. Are there any other questions or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question about, we have other third-party vendors and I'm thinking about OpenGov, which is going to be our accounting and software program, maybe other ones that are unique to the police department that I'm not aware of. But are you, you're able to deal with these, potentially these other vendors are coming into our system and, you know, are they, you know, breaching our firewall, so to speak? I mean, they have access to our network and our system. Do you monitor what they're doing? Can you provide protection so that if they are hacked somehow or something goes amiss with them, that we're protected against somebody coming into our system sort of through their back door?
Very good question. And I'm, on record, I'm going to say there is not a single system or a single company in the world today that can say that, yes, we will be able to do it. If I'm going to tell you here, yes, you're 100% covered, I'm lying. I'll be honest with you, right? Having said that, we will monitor anything that comes in into your network or goes out of the network. That will be part of the SOC and we will correlate all those logs and basically be able to create an event mechanism of if someone is trying to hack you, we'll be able to correlate that and tell you that something wrong is happening. Will we be able to block or stop before they do something wrong? Honestly, it's a toss of a coin depending on who is trying to attack. I'll give you one more example. Few years back at Merck, there was a NordPity attack. The virus was planted in one of the vendors who actually brought it in. It spread through the entire plant and multiple plants in five minutes. And they lost about $6 billion in that over a span of nine months. Same thing happened with Sony. So the speed at which these things spread and who is trying to attack you is going to dictate that. We will have all the tools, we will put in to monitor and manage the best that we can and that's available. So I'm not going to say, am I going to be able to do it 100%? No, I will never sign up for something like that. But are we going to be able to do the virus scans and do the SOCs, do the, the analysis? Yes, we will be. And we will put in processes that will mitigate these types of things happening. So before some vendor, we will be your front end for you to talk to anybody that you are going to bring in. So we would want you to include us when you are trying to onboard a new vendor, onboard or bring someone in who is going to gain access to your systems. We would want to make sure that you have processes in place, you have the technology in place to mitigate and minimize these things.
There's also the relationship with the county for our voice, for our phone system that they would have to be involved in.
Yeah.
Or not, well, I guess they could be considered as a vendor, but it's a moment.
Right. Well, we also have SCADA systems for our water treatment plant and our wastewater treatment plant that are probably fairly, I'm going to say not very sophisticated more than likely, but probably also very old. Those are the kind of things that could be easily hacked, hacked into.
Yeah, and we did talk about that with your, we do have actually OT engineers on, on our payroll. So they understand the water treatment plans and so, so we will be able to handle those, yeah.
There's networks, the network segmentation.
Absolutely, yes. You're right. So there are mechanisms to protect those old systems which do not conform to the new way of communication by segmenting them off behind the firewalls. So those will be some of the things that we will be actually doing.
Good questions. Anyone else?
Just one more. Did you find anything interesting when you connected to your little...
Oh my gosh. Faces. That wasn't, yeah, that's definitely...
And should we have, should we have heard from our other provider? You don't have to answer that if you don't want to.
So let me put it this way, there's nothing that basically said, stop doing what you're doing and we need to fix it now. There are a couple of things we did, we did find and we did talk to the chief and Randy about it. We notified them. That was a little bit concerning, but I, I don't think there was anything that we found that said it was misconfigured and incorrectly done to an extent where it scared us, so.
And do you use a tool like, I don't know, we, we have something at work where they'll say, give me your number and whatever, like if I'm calling in remote and then they can take on my screen and go and fix stuff, right?
Yes, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
That makes sense because sometimes it doesn't take 10 minutes to, you know, put whatever, whatever little decimal or whatever's missing somewhere.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick, I'll let you know. Quick question from Randy as far as individual web browsing policy. I mean, you know, a lot of people in their lunch hour could go into some pretty weird websites that could be a real, I'm not even talking about porn or anything like that, but just other, yeah, things out there that in Reddit or wherever that may not be the best thing that you want employees opening your system to. So what are, what are our policies on web browsing?
I think it's just, it's pretty broad right now. We haven't revisited that with all covered. I know we did with Asindex when they first came on with us. But I think basically it just says, don't go places that you shouldn't be going. And we could, I think there were some computers that we set, we had the company set, that they couldn't go out and go to different places, like the ones you definitely don't want people going to. I think we're already set that way, so we can't do that. Except for police, if they needed to do some investigation, they needed to be able to get out and look at things that, you know, might be my computer wouldn't let me do. But it's a good point, we haven't revisited that in a while.
We have, for the American Cancer Society, we have, like, we all understand that anything that we're doing anytime is observable by other people. So is that the same kind of, like...
Yeah, we can find it where everybody's been on any, any box that they're on, for sure.
So one, one of those things, so this is the case in point, right? So instead of putting the money in buying desktops, which is not going to give you anything extra, there are lots of new technologies on the, on the proxy side, web proxying, application layer security that would allow you to protect even if someone goes to that particular site. That might be a very legit site. So the problem that, that's happening now is, I'll give you an example. Day before yesterday, I was actually going into a news site, which is a very, very legit news site, very well-known news site. And that site, basically someone had put an ad that was basically taking it to a site which was hacked, right? So it's, it's not the news site which is a problem, it is not the ad provider who is a problem, but then the ad leading to another site which is hacked is a problem, right? So the newer softwares can actually trace through all these things and block at the time, the moment when you reach that last point which is hacked. So those are all the things that we will be coming and telling you that these are all the things that we should be looking at, that's what's going to happen in the next year. We are going to identify where do you actually need to invest to reduce your risk, right? I'm not, I will never use the word to 100% protect you, but the idea is to reduce the risk of things happening and where, where is the maximum return on your investment in that risk reduction. There are certain risks which doesn't make sense for you to put a million dollars to reduce it from 99 to 99.1. But something that can take you from, say, 50 to 80, that's something that we should look at. So those are all the things that we will do over the next year to say, what you already have that we can reuse, there might be certain additions, there might be certain subtractions that you probably have already, something that's old that we don't need, we can get rid of it, buy something new that's better. And this is an evolving space. Unfortunately, today, a software that's on the top is probably in the bottom of the list in the next 18 months because something better has come or some new threat has come that this software cannot handle. So you have to constantly redo this thing, unfortunately.
I have a question?
I do. Well, first is just a comment. I've worked with so many IT vendors over the years where they, you know, we tell them, this is what we want, and they do exactly what we want. But it sounds like what you were saying was it may not be, what we want may not be the best way and you are going to recommend that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's, that's, like, after the project's done, we look and like, okay, here it is. And it's, I'm like, well, it doesn't work right. Well, they're like, that's what you told us you wanted, but it may not be the best way. What I would look for is you'd be the expert saying, this is what you need to do, this is what we recommend, and we decide whether or not we want to do that, obviously.
Unfortunately, you will, if I'm involved in some project, you will hear from me passionately going against what you're saying.
That gives me some confidence, I appreciate that.
And we've spent some time with that already in terms of, I mean, you've got evidence collection and how you collect video and how that process works. We didn't just say, well, this is how you collect this and store it, right? Well, what do you, oh, you're getting it from 10 different places and 10 different applications and, and what's going to happen to that stuff? And what's the importance and what's the impact if you don't have that? We got to understand that because you're exactly right. We are the experts at that. Well, I know how to sell it, but these guys are the experts in that and you'll tell us what you want to have done and we'll make sure that that's engineered correctly.
Great. And the other thing I'm thinking about too, especially because I'm in the training world, you know, you can secure every piece of hardware and whatnot and software you want, but at the end of the day, it's the end users that are using it. So I'm just kind of, I'm wondering what kind of training do you provide? I know you said you got some, you know, like Mike would be trained on some things that he needs to do, but I'm just thinking employees in general, if there's a, a need, especially on the security awareness side of things, like what kind of services you offer on that's, on the training side of things?
So my personal experience first, right? Before, before I get into what we will be doing. You assign training to people, people take it as a chore and do it, they don't learn anything from it. It's a punishment, honestly speaking. So sitting through two hours of security training, 30, even 30 minutes of security training, it actually doesn't work because by the time you're done with the training, you're already having a coffee, you're just clicking somewhere, you're doing something else. What we, what we have actually seen work is very, very small trainings which takes less than two to three to four minutes. That's the maximum, right? Because if you think about it, these days we go into YouTube, we don't want to sit more than 30 seconds on a, on a video, right? We don't want to sit through the whole video. So trainings that are very pointed and do one thing or tell you one small thing and the reason why that small thing needs to be done in small bites helps a lot. So what we have actually moved away with is from long trainings into weekly, bite-sized, four-minute trainings. And we actually have a separate provider who does that, Ningio, is what we actually use. They take the latest thing that's happening in the cybersecurity, they create a training out of that, they assign it to people. It's four minutes, including a questionnaire to test what, what you did, and you're done, right? So it, we are within, we are a small company. Within my company, I know that there have been six instances where people have actually sent emails to the non-technical team in accounts to basically write a PO or change the PO number to, and they caught it because that week they basically played that particular video. So that's one part. We do do send emails when there are certain events that are happening. The cybersecurity team actually sends emails to customers saying that, hey, we are seeing this happening within the community, be careful, don't click. So it's basically constantly we do that. Especially during the Christmas, the Thanksgiving season, you'll start seeing a lot of, hey, I'm in Walmart, can you get me the Walmart card? Or someone basically doing that type of phishing activities. So we start educating people that, hey, careful. There are things now where you actually have emails which basically have a small button where you can just click and it basically sends it directly to the, to the security team. And then they start blocking those types of emails, improving the filtering. So those are all things that are going to be part, part of the service.
We have a similar phishing exercise that, you know, if you identify, you click the button, I think this is phishing and...
Yeah, it goes there.
So the exercises, I think, are more effective than, like you said, I'm not going to sit and stare at a screen for a half hour. It's the actual real world, bite-sized exercises, I think, that, so I was wondering if that's...
Yeah. And we do a lot of, a lot of times we will go in and just basically do a lunch and learn, right? With a smaller group of people, hey, we are done there. We actually even bring in the families, kids in the evening and then just basically do a training because what we have actually seen is you do take laptops home, kids are basically there, you are on that particular network and that malware basically jumps over. So, so those are all some of the things that we will be doing as part of the engagement.
And I, I think you're a know before user now. So you've already got that system. It's auditable, we track it, right? We know who's not watching, we know who is watching, we know who the clicker is, right? That's important information to know who that person is for some re-education in one way or the other. But it's a powerful system and it's, it's up to date and timely.
Great. Thank you.
I do have one question. Like I'm one that opted not to use the city for emails, so I'm using Windstream as my email. So does this include me or any of us that aren't using the city?
But doesn't yours, does it come, like, to the city and gets redirected to you, gets forwarded to you?
No. I don't think they, they canceled our previous carrier. I don't know if it was even all covered, but they, they like canceled or closed my city email address, yeah.
So my personal take again, right? If you are doing official business, right, it should go through the city mail system, period, right? That's the most secure way of controlling the data, what goes in, what comes out, and be able to identify someone else's, not creating something that they could get into city with, with a compromised credential. If you are outside the system, we will actually have no capability to monitor, protect, or do anything, even actually go after someone who is actually coming, coming after the city. We just will not have absolutely no access. So the only things that we can actually protect is what we can actually see and what we can control. Anything outside of it, you are an external party at that particular point in time, they're going to treat your email system as insecure and that's the way all the mails are going to get filtered in.
And then, I guess in part about Andy asking about the, the county, county court, is this going to be, you know...
No, it's not, does not include county court.
Okay.
They have their own.
They have their own IT?
The county.
Oh, okay.
ADP.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good input. Any other questions or comments? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Moving on to agenda item number five. Would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none?
A resolution to reduce collection of the City of Chardin's two-mill fire and emergency medical services levy to 1.5 mils for 2024 only.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
Seconded.
Seconded. Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Resolution number 23-23, a resolution to reduce collection of the City of Chardin's two-mill fire and emergency medical services levy to 1.5 mils for 2024 only. Resolution number 23-23, a resolution to reduce collection of the City of Chardin's two-mill fire and emergency medical services levy to 1.5 mils for 2024 only. number 23-23, a resolution to reduce collection of the City of Chardon's two-mill fire and emergency medical services levy to 1.5 mils for 2024 only.
Is there a motion for the adoption of Resolution Number 23-23? Move and second it. Discussion? Evening, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. On October 17th, the Geogga County Budget Commission notified all entities in the county that the county performed its mandated six-year revaluation appraisal of all real property, and there was an unprecedented average increase to residential property of 29.5%. As a result, they were strongly encouraging school districts, townships, and municipalities to investigate reducing other levies to counter this increase. The approximate increase due to this revaluation throughout the county ranged from about $1,300 annually for a small village to approximately $2.4 million annually for the county. The city is estimated to see an increase of approximately $103,000 for 2024. This increase will be seen in our general and police pension inside levies as a result of the total value of all property in the city increasing from about $174 million to about $208 million, or about 19.8%. Let me just take a quick minute to talk about the inside mills and outside mills. Currently, inside millage in Geogga County is kept at 10 mils and is shared between the county, school district, and the city. The Ohio Constitution does allow for property to be taxed with a vote of up to 10 mils, and currently, the school district receives 45% of these are four and a half mils. The city receives 30% or three mils, and that's the general and police levy, and the county receives 25% or two and a half mils. As I mentioned earlier, these increases are being applied to our inside millage. The city currently has a total of 14 mils, three inside mills, and 11 outside mills. The three mils are being impacted and will see an increase, but the recommendation is to make a reduction to an outside mill levy, specifically a non-qualified outside levy, since that will be 100% benefit to the taxpayer as opposed to a qualified levy that will give us, will give 12 and a half percent back to the state. So in the city's case, that leaves us with one option, and that is our two-mill fire EMS levy. So to help ease the burden on the taxpayer, we are recommending to decrease our 2021 2.0-mill fire and EMS levy by approximately $86,848.41 or to one and a half mils. And this does not mean we have surplus money in this fund, because this is not the case, but based on the unprecedented increase to property values, we are recommending this decrease in millage made for tax year 2023, collection year 2024. And again, since the general levy will be seeing the increase, we will take that $86,000 and, and transfer it to the fire levy to make that fund whole. And I'll open it up to any questions.
Mark, did you have time to, an example of a specific piece of property, what it's currently valued at, the market value versus the assessed value, and what this benefit would, the homeowner, property owner would, would see?
So unfortunately, my answer is still the same. It's hard to say. I did reach out to the county to see if they can give me a good amount, and I did look at a couple of examples, but again, it, it all, it all varies. So I don't really want to give you an amount, because again, the city had about 50 or 60 parcels, some decreased, some stayed the same, some increased in value. I looked at a couple of random samples, some increased by 20%, some increased by 10%, and their tax increase, you know, varied also. So it's, it's really hard to say at this point.
And so that, that spread over, how many properties are within the municipal boundary? Couple thousand?
You know, again, unfortunately, I don't know the exact amount of properties, but again, originally, it was 174 million of valuation, which is increasing about 208 million, you know, because of that six-year reappraisal.
So probably talking pennies of impact on any particular property.
Again, yeah, the last example I looked at of a property order in Chardon, it would have been about, you know, $6, you know, the 30% that's attributed to the city would have been about, about $6 a month, and their property, I think, increased by about $50,000. So you think, wow, $50,000, that's a huge increase, but the actual tax, you know, the estimated tax increase would have been about $6 per month. Again, every property's going to vary, that was one, one example, but, you know, anybody could look at their parcels, plug it in the Geogga County calculator, and see the specific increase, and it breaks it down by the city, county, and school district, based on those new valuations.
I know personally, I had, I'd say, four to five residents reach out to see what we could do, if anything, as they hear that the county has encouraged municipalities and, and townships to do what they can. And I appreciate the Finance Committee putting that together, as far as it's something that we can do, and this is for one year, correct?
This is for one year, correct.
So if nothing changes statewide, then we have to have the same meeting a year from now, and, well, there's some variables that are being placed, but technically, we'd have to...
Yes, just because we're acting now does not, it's not, it's only a one-time, one-time deal, so.
It really would depend on the state, State House making changes in the tax law.
And, Mark, if you said this, I apologize, but the fire department will be made whole.
Yes, actually...
There'll be no reduction in services based on this.
Yes.
And they are aware of it, because they participated in the Finance Committee meetings, so this is not going to be a surprise to them, but they are cooperating with the recommendation.
Yes.
And I should mention, the Finance Committee did meet on this, and it was recommended to council for approval. And I, I think the challenging thing to your point is, right, there's only so many places that we can make an adjustment. So we're trying to, to those residents that reached out to you, Chris, in good faith, make some adjustments, but there are areas that probably have a bigger impact, such as schools, that, I mean, there's only so much that we're, we can do with it, but, you know, we wanted to try to do something with it.
We did recently, Dr. Hamilton, for local schools, and they were going to, according to him, we're going to discuss that at their last school board meeting, as whether they were going to take any action. I have not heard the results of that, but...
But he's also planning on coming to next council to talk about this, to address this.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Mark on this issue? If not, please call the question.
Mr. Lowko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, Executive Session. We have no reason for executive session. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, any other business? I think Randy has one or two.
I do. Thank you. With the Christmas holiday coming, it's been typical for the city to have the mayor approve giving a half-day off for our employees the Christmas Eve Day. This year, Christmas is on Monday, so I was speaking with the mayor and asked if he would consider that our employees would have the half-day off on the Friday before, so they could start their holidays early, basically as a Christmas gift, four hours to everyone. The non-essentials, please, please still have to stay and work. And we wanted to make sure that council was on board with that as well.
Do you need a motion to that regard?
I don't think so, just, I'll do it. We've done in the past without any kind of...
Anyone have any opposition to that?
I have no objection.
Yeah, Ben's not here, so we can pretty much...
Right, yeah. We get, we have Friday off as our, as our holiday, so yeah, by all means, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Will do. And then, the only other thing I wanted to let you know was, Ben, Ben did revise the agreement with Brewfest, Angela Nagel, and sent it to me as a draft, and I gave him back some comments and then sent it on to Angela a couple days ago, maybe yesterday, and I haven't heard back from her yet.
I guess at some point, I'd like to see that, if you can forward it. Just curious as to, I know we discussed different language, different opposition, I'd like to know where it stands.
Are we ended?
Yes, I agree. And, okay, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
I have something.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, if you probably all noticed, the arches on the square, the candy cane lane out there, and I just wanted to thank Dave Nelson from Chardon Performance. He just, like, he took this on, like, this was, like, you know, he's been working on this forever, and it looks fantastic, it's going to be fantastic. There's already people, like, walking through it, taking pictures, and so I just wanted to thank him and Chardon Square Association for financing that project.
And the lights are remaining off until 30th? Is this accurate?
I don't know all the rules. I, I don't know.
This was a pretty big topic last year, so...
This is, this is a, I don't want to put my name on that at all.
Well, whose name is on it?
I don't know.
I think what I was told, Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, they're going to go on Friday after Thanksgiving, that weekend, and then be off until Thursday.
So nobody needs to call the city and say that the lights are out, because we already...
They're going to go off Monday.
Yeah. So they'll be off for...
Right, so they'll be on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then off.
Yeah.
Right.
Until the lighting on Thursday.
But hopefully, the arches aren't going to be lit until...
I know, I have no information.
Idea is for people that have family, friends, or what have you, relatives coming into the Thanksgiving weekend to have the opportunity to see what...
And for Small Business Saturday, which is Saturday afternoon.
Okay, so that's, got it.
Go Hilltoppers.
Go Hilltoppers.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
We also shop with a cop December 3rd, Sunday, December 3rd. We'll start at 11, shopping for the kids, so the elves are more than, more than happy. We'd be thrilled to have any one of you that want to come in and help us wrap. Don't necessarily have to be there at 11, probably 11:30 or 12 on Sunday, December 3rd would be awesome and appreciated.
It's very fun.
Also, it's going to be at Walmart, at the Walmart store.
Okay.
We also received two donations, one from the Chardon Eagles and another from Consumer Tire last week. I'm going to invite them to come to council and make a presentation here. They were sizable donations, and it's a repeat of what they did for us last year, but every little bit helps, but that certainly helps, because they, they, very generous, and that's going to help us. Right now, we've identified seven families, 14 children at this point. So we're heading in the right direction, and it's clearly obvious that there's folks that have needs, so we'll be able to help out.
Kyle, the wrappers are in the outdoor garden area in the far, if you're looking at the building far left side, so go in and go all the way left.
You can go chill with them.
Otherwise, that's a big...
You'd run around in there for a while.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Move and second it. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Likewise opposed, we are adjourned at...
You voted, you're not allowed to, Randy voted.
7:33.
He's not allowed to, we have to redo it.
How exciting, aye, aye.